I would like to welcome you all to the Thursday, October tenth, twenty twenty-four meeting of the Belly-In-Lady Board. I'd like to start with two things. First, can we start with the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, united one individual.
While we're standing, I would ask that you keep in mind the people in the southeast part of the country tonight. They've had two horrific hurricanes and just keep them in your thoughts and prayers. They're going through a hard time. Thank you. Dylan with business, Rob, can you bring us up to speed on what's happening with Prospect Hill Village? And by the way, excuse me, first item this evening was going to be Maple Street, Zero Maple Street, Lot three and three A. Have any asked for continuance?
Yeah, so vote on the continuance. So just an update on that.
Please.
So with that, I know it was discussed at a previous meetings that there needed to be a permit for scenic road as well as there's actually a special permit that also is required. That's being, it has been advertised, it will be on the October twenty-fourth meeting. So what they're going to do is they're requesting a continuance to the October twenty-fourth public meeting to discuss the new plans as well as those additional items that they are.
But they need to vote continuously.
Correct. It's more streamlined, efficient, and we might have the the second round of hearing back by then as well.
Okay. So they're looking for the continuance to our next meeting in two weeks.
They'll move.
Do I have a second? Uh, move this second in. Paul, any discussion? All I want to do is call for the vote, but at the same time, I would like to make vote attendance. So you just state your name and you vote.
You know, Vogba, you can just say you're here. Nick, I.
Ryan, I.
Bill, I'll call it a lie.
We'll go by him here.
Steve, I.
That motion passes unanimously. Can you bring us up to speed on what's happening with Prospect Hill?
So Prospect Hill, I know Lou's here if you want to step up, Mr. Petrosi.
We advertise for the public hearing, so I don't know if you want to open the hearing.
That's actually a good point. Yeah, this this has been re-advertised and the butters have been re-notified.
Okay, so what I would like to do is I will read on this continuation of Prospect Hill Estates. The applicant and owner, Wall Street Development Incorporated, proposed us to construct a hundred fifty-six two-bedroom townhouses in fifty-two buildings with three townhouse dwellings in each building as well as associated improvements. The primary and secondary access to the project will be off Prospect Street in Franklin, the development quote-unquote. The property is located off Prospect Street, approximately seventy-two plus the amount of acres of land shown on the assessors map, sixty-five Lot twenty and twenty-two. Assessors map sixty-nine, Lot eighty-seven Zone Agricultural. The plans were prepared by GLM Engineering Consultants, Incorporated, Nineteen Exchange Street, Holliston, Mass. Oh, one, seven, four, six, Franklin, Mass, oh, two, oh, three, eight. Can they entertain a motion to open the public?
They'll move.
Any discussion? John, I'm sorry, any second?
Second.
Maiden, secondly, any discussion?
Yeah, discussion quickly. It's a new public hearing. It's a new application technically?
It would just be the new public hearing, so the application has already been submitted, so.
So is there an app, a recent application versus the original application?
The original application. So.
So if I was, so when you say a new public hearing, it's not a new public, it's not a new application, it's an old application that's adjusted, that's uh, I guess I'm missing. Is it, it's more or less a continuum, continuance, right?
Essentially, and what's happening is it's, this is a procedural way of getting the new member up to speed essentially. So I get, like, are you you're, I think what you're trying, you're asking is if the the current, the application that was submitted is still valid, correct? Which it's.
Well, I guess I'm asking is, is, and again, this is discussion on the moment. So the question is, is the for the last several months, we've been looking at an application. We knew, we heard that there was going to be a recent middle of drawings for it. I guess there's new drawings here. Is this a new public hearing with a new start? Or is this the old one? And I guess I'm kind of asked the question because, you know, we've had a lot of testimony in the past. And.
Yeah, the 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 old testimony is the biggest question, which I did reach out to town council for clarification. Haven't received it yet, but I think it might even be best that to give Lou the chance to basically present this information. I have information that I want to just kind of get everybody up to speed on if there's any questions or discussion. But I would suggest at the next public hearing, we actually have town council here.
Okay.
To answer that.
Okay, so then. Now you add to that?
Okay.
I think, and here's my concern. We've had a lot of discussion from the public in two towns, Franklin and Bellian, for several months.
Yep.
We have minutes and videos that we've we've done that are in the public domain.
Yep.
I don't want to have to waste people's time. All the concerns are still going to be addressed and articulated by this board. Is that a fair assumption?
I think that's a very fair assumption. We have a long way to go.
Okay. Well, just to let the public know that we're we're not starting over. Everything that's gone in the past will be part of this file moving forward. And we'll hear for input from our town council at the next meeting.
Correct.
He just re-noticed, I mean.
You're sorry?
He just re-noticed.
This is just a re-notice.
Yeah, correct, yeah.
Yeah.
He elected to re-notice, so.
Yes.
It's a continuance of the old one with the
Yeah.
with a new notice.
Yeah, it's just procedures now.
That's that's.
I understand that. I just want the people to know that everything in the past is still treading.
Okay, so so we were talking a little different. So this is a continuance of the public hearing that we were in. And that's real?
Correct.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Any further discussion?
Is Mr. Goodyard voting under?
Technically, not right now, but once we open the public hearing, he will be eligible.
Well, and Lou needs to get everyone up to speed on where we're at too, so that's the other caveat.
But technically, right now, we use it until we open the public hearing, and then that process begins of educating the newest member and educating us. So I'd like to call for the vote.
Nick, I.
Ryan, I. Bill, I.
Bill, I.
Eva.
Rob?
Well, I'll let Lou take it away since if you, I mean, you're the chair, you're running the meeting, but.
Can you give us a brief overview?
Brief overview, yes, I will. As the board just discussed, this is a continuing.
And I'm, I think you may be blocking the view of some people.
So as the board just discussed, this is a continuation of the previous public hearing that was uh, held and has been held since the first application has been filed. The purpose of re-advertising was to bring the fifth member, the newest member of the board into the hearing process so that he is eligible to vote as part of a special permit application that's been filed. Since we last met, I indicated that there would be revised plans. We have revised the plans. We've submitted those plans. The new plans call for uh, secondary access to go out to Lake Street. Um, we, since we uh, this period of time, in addition to desire of the new subdivision, we've also met with the sewer department, I mean, the DPW to discuss sewer and water. Uh, the sewer, as you recall, is still going to go down the railway. Um, the water is going to be looped. Water is going to be looped out down Lake Street to Cross Street. The most beneficial looping that can be achieved through the project for the town. Um, we've also um went out and surveyed what was previously known as the, well, not previously known, it's presently known as the firing range that's the Golligan Police Department utilizes. It happens that that firing range encroaches on our property for some distance. We'll be working with them to uh create some sort of arrangement where they can keep the firing range in its place. We've eliminated the roadway that was on the Northerly property line um, because it's certainly not necessary to have three ways into the site. We've had discussions with the fire department relative to the emergency access out to Lakeview Avenue. Um, we're currently in front of the Conservation Commission with with a new filing that will be made next week. Uh, essentially, what you see here in green is the area that's um denoted as bordering vegetated wetland. Mr. Salisbury asked us to calculate at the last meeting how much square, how much area is related to wetland? Uh, BBW, that number is five hundred and seventy-six thousand, six hundred and thirty-one square feet. Um, we are also, as part of this arrangement, we're going to be encroaching into a riverfront area that is currently going to be vetted out by the Conservation Commission over the next few meetings. And essentially, that's pretty much, yeah, we've filed new plans, revised plans. We filed an updated traffic study to the, to uh, deal with the access onto Lake Street. And quite honestly, I think we're at the position now where we can ask for a peer review of the traffic. Um, the drainage, stormwater management, for the most part, has been reviewed. Um, there will be some additional review that will be necessary for that portion of the project that has not, that's just recently designed. We'll be submitting a supplemental drainage report uh, to incorporate that. But other than that, the, we have not, I know your next question is we have not revised the plan for a density issue. Uh, but we're perfectly willing to enter into some sort of dialogue of ask Rob to meet with me next week and sort of discuss some ideas that we have going to that uh, possibility. So with that, it's really kind of like a peer review kind of exercise. We understand the concerns and the comments that have been made over the last four or six months. So we hope that we will be accommodating those comments and addressing the concern over time. But I think uh, for the newest member of the board, uh, getting him acquainted with the project. Um, essentially, as I've said before, the roadway, regardless of, regardless of density, this roadway system is not going to change, I don't think, unless when we do our sweat path analysis. There is a, an area that doesn't need to be turning radius as we got the fire department needs, but for the most part, this roadway network that we have um, in place is going to be uh, the network that we're doing, the design that we're going to be moving forward with. Um, so other than that, there is really kind of uh, we met with the Conservation Commission last night to introduce this revised plan and other is, other matters that um, they're going to um prepare a peer review, a proposal to solicit peer review uh, that will be under consideration between now and the next meeting is uh, first, first meeting in November. Um, so that's where we are at this point and any comments are, that the board wants to make, that would perfectly happen to answer any questions.
Luis, do you have any comments? I know we're just seeing this the first time.
Um, so I guess my only question is, so you're, the roadway is onto Lake Street, is that kind of what you're proposing as the new alternative if the way into the site?
That is correct.
Okay. Just confirming that.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm not going to add anything.
Oh, okay. I want to get to density in a minute, but.
You said peer review for a traffic analysis, was it? Did a traffic analysis already get performed by, by you for the Lake Street?
Yeah, we submitted the traffic study recently within the last week or so.
Okay.
Um, previously, we had submitted a traffic report for the project. Uh, but it only concerned the late, uh, the Prospect Street access points. And previous to that, during the subdivision process, we had also submitted a traffic report relative to the site distance, the available site distance and the traffic on Prospect Street. So uh, the revised information that was just submitted will deal with Lake Street, traffic counts, traffic speeds, site distance. Um, and whatever else, I I, you know, the report is like a hundred and fifty pages long, so it has a lot of information in that report. Um, and somebody who knows about traffic needs to take a look at it.
I don't think I've got any new concerns.
Okay.
A lot of them from the past.
Yeah, I want to echo some comments from the past. You've heard this board talk for the past six months about density. And you submitted a couple of proposals, and density has not changed. And you've heard it not only from the board, but from residents from two towns. And it's concerning to me that you've not addressed the density, which is your, obviously, you're right. But on the other hand, you mentioned that you may want to talk to Rob next week about density and other options. You also mentioned that it may be time to do a traffic peer review. Um, this is going to be a dramatic development that's going to have impact on two towns. I have some reservations about stepping in right now and doing a um traffic peer review on our side because number one, we don't know what the density is, as you said, you may change it. We've not heard from the fire department on the ability to access this. I'm wondering what the town of Franklin has to say on access to Franklin from your phone. So off the top, I have those three questions I've had. Also, you've heard from the audience, as I said earlier, for five or six months about their concerns. And it seems like I don't want to say they've fallen on deaf ears, as I'm sure you've heard them. But at this point, you have not made any changes to address the concerns of residents not only from Belly-In, but from Franklin, but more critical from the board. And, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, if I think we've had these concerns all along. So then that's my ten cents on this one.
And mind if I butt in just for one second?
Absolutely.
So just so everybody's aware, there's been some items that that have been, that's some, there's been a lot of items that have been initiated since, you know, starting this project. I mean, I think the revised plan set or the first plan set dates back to November thirtieth of last year. So between now and then, there's been about four renditions of the plan. One of them was just uh, concept plans for the access. But just so everybody's aware of where we stand, because this has been a long process. Um, there has been two rounds of peer review for the stormwater and site plan review side of things by BSC. Um, for the first review, which was from May, Lou's engineer, GLM, did respond, which there was then a second peer review that was done. That one has not been responded to, I believe, yet, and the intent is to.
Well, the 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 peer reviewer made a review of the plan, including the drainage. We responded with comments and revisions to the plan. The drainage has been reviewed, the stormwater was, I think, was here at the last meeting, didn't get a chance to speak. But I think his summary would have been that we've met from the stormwater standpoint, all the regulations. Uh, there may be some tweaks here and there, but for the most part, the peer review that has, has been done to date has been responded to. And the next level would be to review this plan for any subsequent changes. And as I mentioned earlier, because there is an additional uh, stormwater requirement for the length of roadway that's going out to Lake Street, that will be a supplemental stormwater report that the peer reviewer will also have to review as well as what we, as far as the traffic goes, the site distance and the entrance onto Lake Street and so on and so forth. So I don't want to, I don't think it's fair to say that we haven't addressed any concerns or comments because we, they submitted an eight or ten-page letter with numerous items on it, and we've responded to them, and we've had our communication, and we've taken care of those.
I understand that, sir.
And Lou, I didn't say you didn't respond to that. What I'm getting at is, is that I believe there were a few items in the the second peer review letter that you may, I think you addressed with these revised plans. I just don't think that GLM responded and.
Probably not in the form of a letter, no.
Which, what I am trying to get at is it needs to be documented on the record that these things have been addressed and that our peer reviewer has said they've been addressed.
Understood.
So that's from the stormwater and site plan side of things. Another item that I don't think that the board is aware of, because it's been, it's sort of recent and also for the public, because it has come up, I believe, both in these hearings and the Conservation Commission hearing, is regarding the sewer pump station connection. So the sewer pump station on Dupree Road has been problematic for the town. I'm not going to go into detail, but it's been problematic. That station is going to be undergoing a peer review as well. I believe I sent the proposal over to you today. It's Kleinfelder is the the firm that DPW is working with. So that was another uh, item that needs to get reviewed for, to make sure that number one, the station is adequate, number two, what improvements, if any, need to be made to make sure that this problematic station is not problematic in the future with additional flows going to it. So that's the um, so that's from the peer review side. The others.
Can I ask a couple of questions on that? So density is a question. And density that would affect stormwater and how much the pumps are that review.
You mean wastewater, right?
Wastewater, yeah. So are we in a position to continue that, or is that a question for i- if there's variables changing here? The streets have changed, the the density is in question. How much of the variables are changing that would affect the analysis that needs to be done?
And that's, I, that's a very good question. I think my my response to that would be if there's a density change, I would, I would hope that it's less density, not more. Um, so in that case, if the Kleinfelder sewer peer review is for the higher density, we're looking at a more conservative number. That's the same too with the traffic uh, review. So in a way, I would actually prefer that the higher.
It's worth going forward on some of that.
In my opinion, it is.
At the worst case scenario.
Correct, it's, that's my opinion, but.
I don't disagree.
Yeah, um, now, so, because if the density gets lower, now we're talking about lower traffic volumes, we're talking about lower sewage flows, so that's, that's where I stand with with those. Now, going back to the, is that all you have for questions for the sewer? Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
I I have one question on the sewer.
Sure.
I hate to deal in hypotheticals. Let's assume you.
Uh-oh.
DPW is doing a peer review because they have some concerns on the future capabilities of the pump station. What happens if they come back and say, um, we don't feel comfortable with this based on the the current pump station we have? And that we either say no, or we have a significant infrastructure to the pump station down the river. When will we get that information? Because that's going to be critical. If they say it can't handle it.
And that's where this peer review comes in.
I understand.
That will determine whether or not that pump station is adequate and what improvements need to be made.
Okay.
And that needs to be a con, I I don't know.
Okay.
I mean, I would hope less than a month.
Okay.
Um, so I know everybody's busy, but I would anticipate less than a month.
Okay.
That would be my hope. But, you know, and that's a conversation that DPW is going to have to have with the applicant, which Lou, I think you've already had kind of conversations with DPW about.
No, they obviously have problems there, and we're just here to hope.
Okay.
I mean, the number, the density isn't what determines the flow, it's the number of bedrooms. So we can reduce the density to three-bedroom units, have the same number, number of bedrooms, same number of flows, so.
I I understand.
Oh, no, this is for Phil. I mean, I'm just trying to explain how the flow is calculated, it's per bedroom, not per unit, so, just so you know.
Um, that's the only comment I have before we turn over to the public. Um, Chief, I know you've had a chance, I hope, to look at this. Um, twenty thousand feet above us, what are your concerns right now?
As Lou stated, we still need to see sweat path analysis. We need to ensure we see the heightened distances. Um, the access road, emergency access road out on the uh, Lakeview Path. Again, we need to look at the grade, we need to look at the sweat path on that as well too. So those are just some quicks out of engagement.
And and can I say that we know what the fire department requirements are, and so we're, we're designing according to those.
I understand, but we've also heard, and the chief has heard from the public, about limited access on Lakeview. We can't lie in Lakeview.
No. But we also, we're bound from the fireside, you know, seeing our master general lock.
Okay.
We did seek out through the state. Um, and it meets the requirements. We cannot stop that access road from coming on the Lakeview Path.
Okay.
Okay, however, we can control it as an emergency access, and we can control it how it's built, and it has to meet the standards. So we do have control on that.
Okay.
Don't have control on stopping it from coming.
You you can't say no.
No, sir.
But you have control if we get down to that point and it's emergency access route, you have significant control.
Yes.
Not what you take for.
And again, emergency access for us is a gated road. It's not everyday traffic. I want to be very, very clear on that.
It's emergency only.
Everyday traffic, that is emergency access, God forbid, we deal with what just went through Florida, and we cannot get into that project. That is emergency with our locks, a gate that we would work closely with, that we would have the key to get in and out. That's all that is for. It's not for everyday traffic.
And to supplement that, if and when we got to a decision, which is down the road and other projects we have deeded, that emergency action room cannot be changed for public road and other projects.
That would come from the.
And that would assist you down long-term. So that's something we would, uh, we've done before. So now I would like to turn it over to the public. Oh, yes.
I I had just two other items that were in here. So just before, um, Just before, um. The one other item, we talked about traffic peer review.
Mm-hmm.
I do think that we should. Initiate that, or at least get a proposal in the hands of the applicant. Um, I. Know we've used MDM in the past. Um, they did the, the recent uh. Project up at Hartford Ave, which I thought they did a great job. Um, I reached out just preliminarily, just to see if they might be interested. They are. I didn't send any information to them yet, but. Um, if that is. The movement of the board wants to go in, I can do that. Um, and then the one other item, because it was brought up uh, in conservation last night and has been brought up in this uh. Public hearing as well. But the open space land discussion. That is currently where the sewer line is. Lou actually just submitted additional info for title. Uh, reasons and our town council is just reviewing that to. Figure out if. You know, the ownership of that, um, railway, so. I just wanted to give a quick update on that, so. That's in the process.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
And I apologize for interrupting you.
That's okay, we're fine.
Um, now it's a public choice. Any questions, please? Ask. Gentlemen, in a shirt in the front, hand raised.
Yep.
Could you state your name, please?
Yeah, John Holden, Bellingham Silver Lake. Blue, the uh, blue lines, the new circulation, can you clarify, is any of that one-way? Direction, or is that all two-way and cars turning in and out on the roads?
It's all two-way traffic. Uh, I don't know the exact width, but I think it's only six feet wide. Um, but it's all two-way traffic in and out.
Has there been any discussion or consideration with your engineers of how to make that? A one-way will move and perhaps limit the. Uh, directionality of cars entering and turning on. Lake Street and Prospect Street respectively.
Well, the only thing I. We haven't had that discussion within the site, but you know, as I continued to say previously, we think eighty-five seven, the traffic is gonna. Be going out to one forty and four ninety-five. And what I. Would think. Uh, that. Perhaps this lake street could be right turn only because that's. Where most of the traffic is gonna go. Um, so that's really the only consideration that we've thought about. Um, but it, it has to be two-way traffic within the development.
I like, I like the idea of the one-way. Coming out of Lake Street there, that, that seems like a smart idea, that's a problem area. Uh, the other question would be about construction access. I think I've heard you talk about as many as five years of construction based rather than getting them all done once. So rather than two years of impacts to a butter, there's potentially four, five, six years. That's a big concern for us. Uh, construction traffic, my wife today was confronted with nearly thirty vehicles. Caused by your subcontractor walking not one, but both lanes of Prospect Street. It's the ninth time by my account this has happened. We filed a police report. The next time we get a recording of this, we're gonna file an injunction with the judge. We'll shut down.
Well, that's my contract, because we sold those lots off to private. For private to the office, so. If you have concerns or if you have uh, an issue with how they're operating and.
We do.
Clearly, as I've said many times about Prospect Street, it's a. You know, the speed, the number of traffic cars, and that's an enforcement issue. Um, it's the town of Franklin. Um, it's not Bellingham, so there's a lot of jurisdictional, um. Uh, areas that come into play. But, you know, by all means, if you have a complaint, uh. Feel free to file.
Self-help information. Could you clarify your plans for development of this proposed project? Would you be the developer, or would you again sell us off?
I, I, I can't answer that question right now, because I, I just turned seventy years old last week, so I'm kind of like getting tired.
Happy birthday, Will.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Gentlemen, what's your hat on in the middle?
My name's Frank Morse, uh, four thirty-four Center Street. I'd like to start about the elephant in the room here for a minute, I'm being facetious. Um, that sewage pump station on. Free, yes, is a joke. I went through the, I think it was three weeks ago, and we had. Six inches of sewage running down the street, okay, into the bro. Conservation, I talked to them the next day, they didn't even know about it. Which is too bad. Have you looked into running the sewage to Franklin instead? Up that, up that old railroad bit, the trunk line you have already there?
Well, uh, go back in a few years here, we, our first. Uh, opportunity for the sewer was to connect into this pump station that's in Franklin on Expo Drive.
Okay.
Uh, we were told that. Um, even though Franklin had an interest in us. Doing that with some improvements to their pump station. Uh, we were advised that. That would be taking, going into another. District. I think that's Charles River. This is Wind Socket, so. Charles River capacity isn't sufficient. I don't, I don't know exactly, but we were in discourage from doing that because it's a. We're taking it from another. One basin to another, to another basin, so. Uh, we. Then turned our, uh, attention to the running the sewer line. Out to, uh, the Dupree's pump station. And uh, Wind Socket had plenty of capacity to handle those sewer.
So excuse me for a minute.
Yeah.
Dupree Pump Stations. Already max antiquated, you'd have to rip the whole thing up and do a full modification. To step up for what you want, which also means from the, from the Dupree Street, all up to Center Street, replace that whole push line. It's too small, okay?
That's, we, we don't know that, I don't know that. If. We have other options, we can do onsite septic too, and so. But this is the most beneficial arrangement for both the project and the town. Because we're gonna open up an opportunity for other parts of the area to be. Uh, to connect into the sewer.
So the Charles River watershed said you cannot go through Franklin.
I don't wanna say that they said.
They change like the wind, they change all the time.
We were told that it would be more difficult to do that, and we would have to go and. You know, Franklin has a different set of, um. Permitting. And city council and other things. We were told that they discouraged. Across line, town lines. So that we didn't pursue that. It was too complicated.
Wouldn't they have the same problem Bellingham and Wind Socket?
No, no, because uh, Wind Socket's a pretty nice, uh, town to deal with. But, in any, in any event, in any event, um. Even though this is more expensive to do. This is not a cheap. Adventure here, this is. Almost over a half a mile of sewer. That we're putting in. And it's expensive. So. Um, we've chosen that route. To. So not only service our development, but to provide a benefit. To the town. And so. Unless, so let's, let's play this out, let's say we do this, uh. Um, study on the, on the pump station. That's really kind of, I don't know what's downstream of the. Of the pump station, as you say, towards Center Street. All I'm concerned about is. Can? The pump station handle our flow? And if it can't, then what is the necessary? Improvements that have to be made to that pump station to handle our flow? Now, could that flow improvement also help the town? With maybe another pump, or maybe a newer pump, or a bigger pump? We don't know that yet, but I would say beneficially that. Us going there and making some improvements to that pump station would be a benefit to the town. Um. Which also gets us to the density, because these things all cost money. And the project gets smaller, the less it becomes feasible to do it, and then we end up with onsite. Septic and no sewer. Um, so. That's why, when I, when the chairman asks me all the time about, there's no proposal to reduce the density, well. There's a lot of loose ends before we get to the point of agreeing. On what that density number should be. And so I have my own ideas on how it can be done, but I'm not. And I'm negotiating a public hearing, what that number should be, or what, how it should be formed on a plan. So there's a lot of, as Rob says, we're gonna do this, uh. Um, peer review on the pump station. I'm sure the DPW knows what the problem is there now. Just the question of whether or not you wanna get it from somebody that I have to pay for. So I'm willing to do that. I'm gonna pay somebody to tell the town what they already know. And whether or not they can handle our. Additional capacity. This is only about thirty-two thousand gallons per day. Um, so it's not a lot of flow considering that. Wind Socket has like two million gallons per day capacity.
Depends what's heat time and not heat time.
Exactly, it's true.
If you can stage it, that's one thing.
There's a lot of things, but thirty. For this, for this side of development, I've been told. They've got plenty of capacity. Whether the pump station can handle it. That's the unknown, that's the question. That's the elephant in the room, as you wanna call it.
Mr. Jim.
Yes, sir.
Does the town? Employ a full-time engineer now?
Well. When I say engineer, years ago, and that's when I talk out of school here, was a guy named Matt McGally. When I did the water main on Maple Street all the way out to four ninety-five, he oversaw the whole project and other projects in town, okay? And, um. He was a smart guy. Um, and he taught me a lot about formulas and don't always hang your hat on that particular formula because. It's tested, but they always blow in your face sometimes. So just because you've got some, some rigs or, or numbers and calculations set down from the state. Doesn't always apply to what you're trying to do. You always wanna leave yourself a bigger margin. Because when the pipes choke up. You guys don't get the phone calls. You understand?
Yeah.
You gotta look, and there's other properties around there. That would like to tie in someday, and now they can't. So you've gotta be, have some foresight. You're gonna design something, why use a pipe this big when you put, you got the same trench open, put a bigger pipe and edit.
So I think, Frank, your, what your question is, is basically. At least for the sewer pump station, you know, an expert needs to look at that. Correct?
Correct.
Yeah, and.
That's just Jim.
Yeah.
I'm just going wide, I mean.
Yeah, and, and we're in agreement, which is why that Kleinfelder, which is, you know. Engineering firm that specializes in wastewater, they are gonna take a look at this.
Okay, thank you.
There's gotta be a rating on the existing pump station that, that Bradford had put in. It's, it's in GPP, it's gallons per day. All pump stations across the world, all pumps have GPP ratings. Everybody know what that is?
Gals per day.
Excuse me, excuse me. One person at a time, please.
Yeah, sorry, are you asking me if I know what the gallons per day?
Does the town know what the capacity of that pump station is?
Yeah, I'm sure.
Gallon per day.
I feel very confident that the DPW knows who's the ones that are in charge of the. Pump station. So.
Uh, that, uh, just so I can interject it. The proposal that was submitted by the peer reviewer Kleinfelder. Is going to be, is part of, they're gonna go back and review all of the documentation for that pump station. And determine what the existing capacity is today. What is the functioning life cycle of the pumps that are in there? Because that's really kind of what the problem is, when you have a pump station that fails to pump the. Poop out of there, that's where the problem comes. You have a pump that doesn't work. And just like if you have a sub-pump in your basement. And the ba, and the battery goes out, or it's, or you have a power failure and it fails to pump, you're gonna have water in your basement, same.
So they're, they're too quick.
Sirs. What we're trying to do, I apologize for interrupting you. We're trying to look at this pump station holistically. And look at it long-term, the town is. And what is the impact of this project on it, long-term, as well as the usefulness of that pump station? So that, that's gonna be a critical point on what he wants to do. And we hope to have this done in fairly rapid order. Mr. Morris has been talking about this pump station. Since the first and second meeting. And we, we, we've been aware of it, and the town is aware of it. And that's why we're doing the peer review. Not only for his impact. But the long-term impact. And the viability of that pump station.
Now, let me interject for one second. The pump station is down at the Barley Acres. At the, after you go by, uh. Uh, Dairy Queen. Down there on the right-hand side.
Yes.
Was it first hour or something? I forget which part of the road it was. That seems to be working well. They have prob, they have a bad problem with pumps failure. But the humans seem to be big enough. Again, it's taking a lot of volume throughout the whole town. And pushing that to Frank. Up to the center and out that way, out one forty.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? It's probably a nice model to go back in and look at that design. And see what that's doing where the other one hasn't got that capability. You understand?
Frank, I know you're not shy, if you wanna. Share your knowledge.
Look around?
You wanna share your knowledge?
I could, I could do it, because I'm hoping we'll see a couple of grinder pumps, and maybe a third. O, optional pump that kicks in. There should be three working all simultaneously. So if one gets tied, you kill it, and you still got two to play with. You only got one. It runs into the Silver Lake, down in the river.
And we're concerned about that, as is conservation. Any other questions?
Dave Nichols, Black Mo Street, Bellingham, down Silver Lake. The very concept of onsite sewer is totally unacceptable. With all the wetlands here. And that it feeds the Cross Street pump station. I'm hearing all this about, you know, the sewer line, the pump station. And he's saying that all that would be onsite. There's no way that that ground can process that much septic. And not affect the drinking water.
If it comes to that, then we peer review and then if I'm misinterpreted. Peer assessment?
No, it'd be the board to help.
Board to help, okay. Okay.
Please don't put more on me.
Okay. But we will not, we will make sure it gets addressed. Anyone else? Gentleman, woman in the purple shirt, maybe?
Uh, Danielle Lambert, Moore Drive. Uh, so within the last six months or so, I believe this board approved a development on North Street. Where the original scope. Was about seventy-two units and reduced down to about twenty percent of that. That project, from my understanding, did not have the wetlands implications that this site has. And as anyone that has traveled on Lake Street and Prospect Street knows that you are tailgated, passed, and. Sometimes in bumper-to-bumper traffic with Amazon trucks, et cetera. Given the significant number of issues that present themselves with this project that weren't available on North Street. Can we anticipate a similar reduction in scope? And density? Here as well?
That's the big question we have right now.
Yep.
What I, I can tell you. Is the project of North. We were very diligent. We listened to the neighbors and the town residents. And it was a long process. And we worked with a developer that was willing to work with us. And you've seen the results. We try to take that approach. On all the projects that are in front of us.
And I think it was beneficial when those folks were here for those hearings, that they were very. Forthcoming with their willingness to reduce. The, the density and the scope of that project.
That's correct.
I think if, I, I think the folks here would appreciate that same transparency. As far as what the comfort levels are for reduction in scope.
Okay. Thank you. There was a number. Yes.
Um, Polly Aiello of Lakeview. Could you, I'm, I'm old, so could you explain how you're gonna put the traffic on Lake Street? And take a right turn?
So right now. This is, this is Lake Street, Prospect Street at the bottom.
Mm-hmm.
So Lake Street's gonna come out, and instead of allowing left and right, we're just gonna have them take a right.
By Prospect Street.
This way. Right, well, the people who wanna go down Prospect Street can go up the main entrance. This, this is for people.
It'll be a secondary.
On the same token, isn't there a. There's a stream there. It floods at least twice a year. Um. You know, there's a lot of, there's a big pond over there. How are you gonna build a stream?
All I can tell you is that we've engineered it, we feel pretty comfortable with what we've done there, and.
I don't feel comfortable with it.
Okay. By the way, so you just know that this is two hundred feet or maybe two hundred fifty feet away from your, this stream that you're worried about, so. Um, there are other issues that I don't want to get into tonight relative to the reason why that culvert may not handle the flow. That's a separate issue that I'll have to deal with the Conservation Commission with.
I mean, that little stream?
Well, it's a stream in the pond up ahead. And, um, you know, there's, if you ever get a chance to walk up there, you'll see there's, there's a dam, there's a dam up there. There's a dam that's been breached.
Mm-hmm.
And that, when you have a significant storm event, uh, doesn't hold back the water the way it should or in the past. So what happens is downstream, you have this tremendous amount of flow into a culvert that's been there for a long time that's not sized to handle that flow.
But on the same token, there's the two ponds, not one on each side of Prospect Street.
Yeah, yeah.
And the Beaver keep making dams and they just fixed that, but the Beaver will make the dam, it backs it up, and that's what makes it blow up. So, you know, make it so wet.
So that's not my, that's a.
No, but I'm just saying, it's, it's still going to happen.
No, well, I don't want to get into the semantics of how I think it could improve the situation there. But another part of the problem is that when you see water there in the spring, you know, this is the low point of the two roads. This is from Lake, from Prospect Street down and from, uh, Cross Street down, this is the low spot.
Mm-hmm.
There's no, there's no protection for our property. The shoulder is off, is lower than the street. So the natural flow is to drain onto our property. Technically speaking, there should be catch basins there with curving that would capture the flow and put it into the wetlands directly, like in a normal, in a normal subdivision that we're required to do. But the town doesn't have that. And, uh, maybe that's something that gets incorporated into the stormwater management improvements.
I, I understand that, but I also know that that road was built a long time ago and they didn't have all these regulations and they did what they had to do at the time.
I understand, but don't penalize me.
No, I'm not, I'm not. I'm just saying, these things are, have to be addressed.
So when the developer comes in, a lot of these problems get brought to the service because I'm making the life harder for everybody. Um, we're, if somebody were to say, okay, can you put a couple of catch basins there because we think that's a source of flooding? Then it's, then they make that recommendation and whether, you know, in terms of the financial feasibility of the project, when it's all said and done, maybe that's a recommendation that we say, okay, that's a good idea. It helps us, it helps the town. And we put it in and get the water off of the road. Which is what should happen because if you drive that road, there's no catch basins there. So where does the water go when it rains? It goes to the lowest spot that it can get to.
I understand that.
So that's why our property, if you look at the other side of the street, has a, has the shoulder of the road is higher and on our side, the shoulder of the road is lower. So I could go, I could go in there now and build up the shoulder of the road and keep the water on the street and it'll be repented.
And change it. With, with all due respect, Don Quo, five eleven Main Street, I drive that every day, every day. Who knows? Um, so the water that fills that area you're talking about comes from your property. Very, some of it comes down the road, but I've lived there for thirty years and I watch it happen. It fills your area first. And it doesn't have to be raining. It, it comes in. I think some of what you proposed would benefit. I do. It's not going to eliminate it. Where that road comes out, that gets wet every winter. It freezes solid. Um, it fills with water. Catch basins maybe would work, right? If you like catch basins, a lot of people don't like catch basins. Um, it's, it's a problematic area. I know you're trying to figure out the solution. Is I don't have the answer, but it's a problematic area.
Well, I, I hire professional engineers to review this stuff. I pay them good money. And I know what they tell me and I kind of agree with what they're telling me. So, and, and the DPW, we've had conversations about this culvert underneath, uh, Lake Street. You can't change the culvert because if you make it bigger and you increase the flow downstream, you could affect somebody else downstream with a higher flow. So if you want to keep an open mind about this thing as we move forward, there's opportunities here to resolve or mitigate a problem that continues on a regular basis. So I can't give you all the answers tonight because we're, we're still introducing the plan and we've got a lot of other hurdles ahead of that. But there are these concerns that you've expressed and we understand what they are. And we understand what the solutions can be. But we, we can't come to these meetings and get attacked every time that we're doing something that's already existing in the.
Wait, let me just check for a minute. I think they're just expressing their concerns. I don't, I don't think they're attacking you. But, uh, woman in the back.
Hello, Bonnie Wheeler, two eighty-nine Lake Street. So my question is, so I see that there's going to be a road now that's being proposed on Lake Street. Is it still going to be an entrance on Prospect Street in Franklin?
Yes.
Okay. Because I brought these, I brought this before to this board and I brought it to the conservation. But here's paperwork from the town of Franklin dated, um, January of twenty twenty-four. Do you, you to the?
Where, where we see it now.
Okay. And so they expressed, Franklin expressed concerns. Then they followed up in February. And here's the letter on April twenty-fourth that Franklin sent to the planning board that says here, um, multi-family units with roadway access from Franklin is denied.
Right.
And so I'm, it's not clear to me, has Franklin rescinded that denial?
I have no idea what you're talking about. We have approved subdivision roadway from the town of Franklin onto Prospect Street. We have not filed any applications with Franklin and we're not intending to file any applications at this time with Franklin. So what denial are they talking about?
It's on the website, yeah, it's on Franklin website.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, ma'am?
Yes.
Um, April twenty-fourth?
Yes.
There it is.
Yeah, okay. And then there was another one following up from, on May second, from Franklin to Bellingham that says, um, I hope the above documentation is submission, sufficient to convince the board it should deny the proposed one fifty-six unit multi-family development. But if not, please consider, carefully consider, um, additional issues. And so it appears to me, you know, a layperson, that Franklin is not supporting this and not, and has denied an access route.
So for the record, have you given your name for the?
Oh, yes. Bonnie Wheeler, two eighty-nine Lake Street. Yeah. Oh, it's been.
I know it is. Thank you.
Yeah, and I come to the conservation.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, can I just add, just because she's been brought up every meeting that we're here.
I understand.
So Franklin, of course, you know, is going to say, uh, they can, we can have access. But the reason why we have a court system is because they make the decision, not the town. So there's no regulation in the town of Franklin that would prohibit us from accessing. It's a public way. We're entitled to access. The only question that they're saying is whether or not they're in a single-family zone, whether or not you can have access from a single-family zone to a multi-family zone. We feel pretty comfortable that we're, uh, we need that requirement because if Franklin looks at their zoning, they do allow inclusionary zoning, multi-family zoning in all residential districts. So when that issue comes up and it may come up, depending on how this, uh, progresses, if Franklin wants to appeal the decision, if it's approval, then they're welcome to do that. We'll, we'll go to somebody who's an unbiased arbiter of the facts and let them decide. And that usually is, uh, Superior Court, Land Court, Appeals Court, Supreme Court, all of those things.
So can I?
Excuse me, I want to, I should direct one more. And I want to be very careful what I say. Uh, if you listen to what the applicant said, he's used everything but the word, uh, this will probably end up in litigation. Based on what he's articulated. So we are working with the town of Franklin. Right, sure.
So if it is, in fact, you know, my question is, because I live on Lake Street. And, um, so if their access in Franklin is denied, then would the plan be to have all the access in Bellingham?
Exactly.
Wow.
Good luck.
And I, I, it's not for me to comment on that. I don't want to deal with hypotheticals right now. Any other?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And thank you for coming.
I'm on three ninety-nine Frank, uh, Prospect Street. Still have a piece of land in Bellingham, but, um, on the same subject, on the same ladder, uh, there is, yeah, they want to spend money, we spend money. But the, the, the point is, the letter mentioned historical, uh, facts and previous legal decisions on a similar, similar situation crossing from one town to another. Uh, my understanding from the town of Franklin, they approved access to, to to the project originally because the project was not so dense. It was twenty-two single-family homes. And since that approval, the project has upgraded or changed and, and became a lot more dense. Uh, and that's why it was raised a concern from a town of Franklin. And there was a communication to Bellingham. And also mentioned that, that if historical facts happened, then from a project that crossed from Brookline to Boston, you know, spending money, spending money in courts. But there is a, a, a previous decision on very similar situation, very similar case. Obviously, the board sees, uh, this letter that, does that encourage to stand on what Franklin is saying or we fear threat that we have to deal with two roads in Bellingham? And good luck.
You know, I'm sure he's aware of the litigation. I'm sure our county council is. And it's something that's being addressed. It's rather premature at this point to talk about. Or could be down the road. But if you listen to what he said, he implied you're Superior Court, Land Courts. To me, that sounds like litigation.
It's just that at the end of the, at the end of the day, we all come to the same original subject that haven't been addressed by the applicant. Is any flexibility on the density? I understand.
Bill, can I ask a question of you then?
Sure.
Um, so will the board's decision on this project come after the resolution to the Franklin issue? Because wouldn't that have to be resolved before a vote can happen on, on the project since that's part of the project?
Okay. It depends on what the decision is by the board.
Brian, maybe has it, yes. So it's, it's, so if, to the extent that he faces a legal obstacle in constructing, if the project was approved, it would be subject to him getting the a- access that he's proposed. So if he doesn't get it, if, if he's requiring from Franklin to get approvals and he can't do it, then, then he can't build the plant. But it, it's not for us to determine the viability of Franklin's position or the applicant's position. It's just, okay, you proposed a plan. If you can get access, fine. And if not, then you can't, you can't do it.
Okay. I just wasn't sure that.
Can you be more?
After, you know, that's resolved and not.
Be more specific. That will be the condition.
Okay.
If I'm going against that.
Okay.
One last question.
I have, what's essentially a follow-up to this, I believe back in May or June, we heard the board discuss, uh, a, a target date by which Bellingham planned or hoped to make a final decision on the viability of the entire special permit application. I might be mistaken, misstating something, but, uh, is there a drop dead date by which Bellingham either needs to or plans to say a or yea, if yes or no to the special permit?
Right. Yeah, I can take that. So that was discussed. So there is a specific timeline to make a decision.
Mm-hmm.
So what we do is, as the continuances occur, because we don't have all the information, which is why we're trying to get the information through the peer reviews and continue to close out items or have more comments or questions, we extend that deadline while we do the continuance. So, and that's up to the applicant to make sure that the extensions are requested. Of course, if the applicant doesn't want to extend the, the deadline, this, or the decision deadline, then the board will be forced to make a decision and you might not have all the information. And that isn't, I think, the route that the applicant would want to take, but, um, so, does that answer your question? So the, that, that deadline gets extended, um, when we do the continuous request.
I'm not quite sure.
I just had to check for a minute. That's a perfect answer to your question, by the way. He gave you all the scenarios. Thank you.
But I, I'm, I'm, um, Mr. Chairman, may I just say, I think on the special permit, it's, uh, the decision deadline is based on the closing of the hearing.
Yeah, it's.
Is that your understanding too, or no?
I believe that is correct.
So as long as the hearing is still open, the board is not under any obligation or deadline to make a decision.
It's the development plan approval of the town.
Oh, that's looking different.
And I believe that that is a sixty-day timeframe.
Sorry, then I apologize. Different, two different permits.
Correct. They said, there's a couple.
Okay.
Items, but.
I know I said that was the last question. I'd be remiss if I didn't ask.
I've got a question. John McCathy, um, Lakeview Avenue. With the planning board knowing about this development and everything, do they have any plans on possibly expanding any of the roads that may be connected to any of this development? As well as some of the other developments going on further down the road? On Cross Street, there's another subdivision going in. And he has another subdivision going in over on, um, uh, ropes? What street is it?
Yours.
North in, um, Blackstone. With all these cars coming in the neighborhood, I mean, you're talking over eight hundred units roundabout. All these roads are going to be needed to be expanded on or built, double lanes. Is the planning board getting any of that information now before these houses are put in and the developments are put in? And will be like, making way for these roads to be widened? And with that in consideration, the same thing with him coming in with his sewer line. If he's putting in that sewer line, everybody in that neighborhood should be able to have the right to tie into that with the, with the idea of that sewer being able to handle the velocity going into the so-called new pumping station. So all that is planning with all these other boards, everything coming in further down the line, as well as trying to take care of the environment and keeping everything clean and benefit the town of Bellingham itself. There's a lot of planning involved. It just takes a lot to put it all together and foresee just this one development and just say, okay, we can do this here. But like you say, five years down the road, what happens if this development goes under? Who's responsible for that? Is this going to be a property owners associations?
Right. Mr. Chairman, can I?
So again, it's all planning and trying to make the sewer lines bigger for later down the roads, trying to make the roads better so we can drive on it. Five, ten years down the road, planning further down, further down for everything. And is all that being in consideration with everything? Trying to keep Silver Lake to the level and trying to make Silver Lake a lake and we don't pollute all the water in it. And trying to make all water that's in this development, these retainage ponds that are all going to go into the water table underneath us is all our drinking water. Town of Bellingham is supposed to be protecting that drinking water that's tied into all of these developments. How do we put, I mean, I'm just hoping that we're all planning to keep this in consideration and keep our protecting our water safe and expand our roads to everybody's safe so we don't have a big catch basis on our hands down the road. So I'm just spelling it out.
Let me express the, um, the water. We're carefully looking at this long-term and short-term on the impact from the stormwater. In regards to traffic, there are committees in town. I believe there's a road, Roads Committee, looking at the future of roads in town. This board looks at projects that are coming in front of us. We look at the short-term and long-term implications on the area and the town of Bellingham. That's what we are tasked to do and we are tasked to represent the residents of Bellingham. And we do that to the base of our capabilities.
Thank you for being there for us then. And one other question is.
Can I miss anything?
If you have another que- I can.
Yeah, one other question was the history of this property. Um, with Bellingham, I mean, like the old trussel, the old railroad station. Can we protect any of that? Can we try to get history related? Can we try to build on it? Can we try to make it a public site? Can we try to make it something pretty for Bellingham? I mean, it's just something, the history of it goes way back. I mean, to put that into just black and white, take a picture of it, but there's something there we could protect. You know, a little history of Bellingham from way back when would be something nice to recognize for our kids.
I believe you now own the Tressels, is that correct?
Well, uh, there's a couple of things here. First of all, this railway um, never been built on. It was really just a, uh, an idea way back in eighteen ninety-seven, never got built. Railway went out of business or filed bankruptcy and there was a long history of a title going forward. There is a potential, um, Edwall or Tressel, as he wants to call it, that's in this general area. Goes over a stream, subject to the juris- uh, jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission. I've suggested, uh, last night that we may want to have a, a nice. I've suggested uh, last night that we may wanna have a, a nice. Uh, call it a wooden bridge or a path to continue this path. Those of you who know where uh, Blackma Street comes out directly across the street is another trail system. That could be a, this could be a continuous trail all the way straight through. Um, these are things that I don't have any control over. These are. Regulatory issues before either your board or the Conservation Commission.
Oh, there's historical commission.
Or I don't know if it's any historical nature. I do, there are no. Structure or architectural things on the property that we know of. But in any, in any case, we, we do look at all of those. Uh, potential amenities, benefits. Or things that, not only for what we're building, but as he says, for the benefit of the town. Anything that we install in a public way. Will be available for anybody. Abutting the public way to connect into. The rest of the property is going to be privately owned, privately maintained. If there's a problem with the water line, the sewer line or anything like that. It's the homeowners association that will be responsible for taking care of it. So. We are looking towards. Improving. And making available sewer for that. Area of town, well, that section of Lakeview Avenue and. Blackma Street and so on, that is currently adjacent to uh, Silver Lake. The only thing I can do is put it there. If the town is not, what they do with it after it's there. It's strictly up to the residents who want, who want to connect in. Or the town who wants to provide the additional sewer extension for those people. So uh, we do our part. As the developer, we improve things generally speaking and. Uh, as long as it's financially feasible to do it, we, we are thinking that's the way we should go.
But planning for that, excuse me, but planning for the neighborhood to tie into that. The flow should not be a bigger piece of pipe now because that's something everybody's going to be tying into. In five years down the road to where it's going to need to be increased?
No, the, there's a standard eight inch line sewer line that's put into the public ways, generally speaking, unless you're. Like a main line trunk that may be ten inches, but generally speaking, all sewer lines. That are gravity are eight inch diameter pipe, PVC pipe, schedule forty. And it's all in there with the manholes to. And there's connections available for people to connect in at a later date. Uh, there's, it's just. Making it available is, is the most important thing because right now. No one person can afford to connect into the sewer. It has to be a. A neighborhood kind of uh, regional type of situation for everybody.
Sir. One thing I need to answer. In the past few projects. We've looked at historical sites, historical markers. And we've done our best to preserve those.
So I did hear that uh, you're suggesting that um, the railroad. If ownership is intact. As you believe it is, would be a excellent walking trail with easements and things like that.
Oh yeah, absolutely.
So that will be looking for that in the plans later, you know?
Well, again.
See how you're suggesting it.
We're, we're in the front of the conservation. I've had them out there. We've walked it. I mean. Basically, this is, this, this is the railway that's there right now.
So there's your history on the project.
You, you can, you can drive.
Give us before.
You can drive this. With vehicles. It was used as a haul road when they were hauling gravel out of there and um.
Yeah, but I'm hearing you're, you're willing to make it a public easement if the ownership ends up being.
Yeah, walking easement, yes.
Okay.
And, and the question would be, oh, is it paved? What kind of condition is it in? And that again.
That's way down the road.
That's down the road.
I don't make that determination. That's down the, down the road.
We're taking notes.
Thank you.
Mr. President. Uh, this resident product roadway improvements, do you mind sharing what might be depicted at uh, the T intersection? With Lake and Prospect?
Lake and Prospect.
Yeah. As far as road, no, uh, the T intersection.
Oh, the T intersection. Well, again, that's, we've had many discussions about that. I haven't had anybody say to me that they liked any of my ideas, so. I've brought up. The idea of. Creating some sight clearance and distance along the uh, Prospect Street so you can see. Further down the line, cause if you're at the intersection now, you have to crawl out. Pretty far so you can see the next car coming. And what that does is it causes traffic to back up because they're not. Looking or seeing that they can go, so more cars back up, but. You know, we've had discussions with the homeowner on the corner. We've had discussions about the right of way that the town has available to it. For some reason, nobody feels comfortable about making a decision, so. Where I can only propose. Things. And if they're suggested, we look at them. If you have a recommendation or if you have a condition. For us to improve that. We do the bit, we'll, we'll, to the extent that it's within the town of Bellingham. Which we think it is. And we can help that situation, but we. Can't do it unless somebody tells us what way they want to go.
Yes, sir. This brings forward, is it possible to have a, I don't know the implication of traffic implications. To ease the traffic rotor on that spot?
No. The town of Franklin, when you get out into that.
Cause it emits more noise and more speed, but it closes.
You know, rotor, rotaries are being, becoming more prominent, uh, predominant in a lot of towns and the state is promoting them in a lot of ways. But because of the location of this on the Bellingham Franklin line. You, it has to be worked out between the two communities with how they want to do it. Uh, my, uh, would be mine, it can be solved, you know, a little bit. By us allowing. Um. Widening the intersection, making the turning radiuses a little bit wider. But we need uh, we need help from the neighbor. And we need uh, direction from the town. And um. When, when you guys pick up that decision. We're happy to uh, entertain it.
We have a lot of things up in the air. Uh, I'd like to um.
Can I just end on one note, going back to that, so. Yes, thank you Lou for clarifying that. There hasn't been any. Guidance from the town. I would just say that. The experts, which are traffic consultants, are definitely the ones that would be the most helpful in giving guidance, which we will. We have not engaged in traffic peer review, which. Will be looking at the intersection, so.
But, let me, I, I'll tell my one thing. Just keep in mind that there have been other projects, as these folks have indicated. Previously where they studied that intersection. The town had the opportunity during those. Proceedings to. Require or request certain improvements there. And the traffic consultant said it wasn't a problem. And therefore. They didn't do anything. Even today. You'll see in the traffic, there's no crashes there. There's no accidents there. It's not like. It's a hazard. It's, it's, in my point, in my view, it is a hazard because you can't see and it's wa- it's an accident waiting to happen, basically. So.
And my only response to that would be that it's based on modeling, which I am. Familiar that there have been other projects that have modeled that intersection and. Not all of them have most likely included traffic counts that would indicate. More traffic that is tied to one hundred fifty six. Townhouses in direct vicinity of the intersection. So all I'm saying is, is that. When you're saying that you're not getting guidance from the town. We are working towards getting guidance through the traffic peer review, Lou, so.
So, can I, Rob, can I go first? Do we, do we have a scope yet for the traffic? And. You know, I just heard him say that's, some of the situation is unsafe right now. Is there a scope for the traffic review?
Not currently.
Not currently?
I just reached out to the traffic peer review, told NDM to see if they were interested.
So they're, okay, so we've got somewhere that. Potentially interested. And the scoping of the project, how would we proceed on that if that was what the board wanted?
Scoping for the traffic peer review?
Yes.
If you would like, um, I know we've had other, I know other. Boards will sometimes bring the, the actual peer review as a discussion item as part of the agenda. We can do it as a discussion or um. Why we probably do it as a public hearing.
To scope out the project, to scope out the traffic.
If you.
Cause there are a lot of concerns about. This area, driving through this area is a concern. Um, I've had concerns where, you know, I come down King Street to Washington Street to. Into Bellingham. And if there's an accident up there, they route everybody through there.
Mm-hmm.
And the time they did that in the last six months, there were fire trucks coming through here in the traffic. It wasn't Bellingham ones, but it was through here that those tra- you know, so there's concerns. How do we, you know, so you think a public hearing? And, and again, I'm asking because it's a brain.
Well, we can include it at the, whenever this gets continued next as a.
Well, I would like to do that. Have you noticed earlier?
Hmm.
We mentioned the traffic study. And we decided to look at, quote unquote. The worst case scenario. Based on this density, the traffic study, if I'm not mistaken.
I see a look of concern on Brian's face. That's my normal look. Okay, fair enough. When I'm around, I know.
Yeah. Uh. Historically, we generally rely on the expertise of the town planner to, to work out the maybe grade of the scope. Um, and I don't think this, this project is any different. That would warrant some sort of public discussion of what those. Parameters are that. Uh, Rob is far more qualified to. Come to that decision than from an engineering point of view. So I, I, I understand your concern that the traffic is very crucial. But I kind of agree with you because I'm actually.
I wanted to hear from Rob.
Well.
What, what, what was just in the past? We just asked you, town planner, should you do?
Yeah, I mean, typically when it comes to these peer reviews, I will usually reach out to the peer review consultant to have them develop the scope and then. Upon that, like I know with this one. The, the three main concerns as far as intersections go are the ones that are in direct vicinity, which. From my point of view would be. Uh, Cross Street and Lake Street intersection, Prospect and Lake Street intersection, and then. It isn't Prospect at that point. It's South Maple, the, the one twenty six. Those are the three major intersections. So that on top of interior circulation of the site, traffic counts. Um, we've mentioned numerous times with Lake Street access, um, site distances, which is. Definitely a major concern. Lou, I know you're mentioning. Now that there might be. Some directional or one-way.
It's a suggestion.
Control. So it's just a suggestion right now. Okay.
I mean.
So.
They provided all this data in the report. We've studied these. It's up to the peer reviewers to understand. Do their job.
Yep, and I, I agree with what, what Lou was saying and I, I think. What I'm just trying to tell you is, is from my. Point of view, tho- those three intersections are the main concerns. On top of the traffic generation and traffic counts, the interior circulation. Um, I know normally they, you know, the traffic peer review consultant will also weigh in on. Um, emergency maneuverability. Of course, Chief Miller is already on top of it, so um.
Any concerns exiting that as far as the emergency that should go into the peer review along with the chief looking at it?
So with that. That. You're talking about the one connected to.
Yeah, the one that's gonna have block, block and one way.
Correct. It would be included in that, but the other thing too, um, they. The plans were added as well with cross-section diagrams showing the profile of that, which Lou prepared. I think that was in the last submission.
Yeah.
But um. That. I believe the intent is for Chief Miller, you want to look at that in. Comparison to the NFPA, whatever other regulations that are way above my head when it comes to emergency stuff, but. That will also be included as part of the um, the traffic period because it's going to include. Really, it's. Any access point and then. What I'm saying is. Off-site, those three areas are the major concern. The three intersections I mentioned.
Rob, just so it said, a concern of mine would be um, if the traffic is backed up at this stop sign.
Hmm.
A concern of mine would be. Uh, that people would use this uh, roadway as a cut through to avoid.
That's my concern too, and that's really pound why we put the rotaries in. We might even put one more in perhaps, uh, just to.
That would just slow the traffic down.
Uh, excuse me?
That would slow the traffic.
Yeah, to discourage people from going to that and. You know, there's other things that we share the same concern about that as a cut through. We don't want people cut through there, but. Um, we'll look to the traffic guys to tell us. What they think about incorporating some of these other types of uh. Uh, traffic count and test measures of these.
So that certainly scope could scope though.
A lot of.
Yeah. Um. I had earlier said we would have our last questions. Um. This has gone on a lot of time. I'll take three. One, one to three. Sir, I think you. Go ahead.
Quick question.
Well, every, every.
Dump trucks per day during construction for three to five years. What was not in the last traffic study and was not in the current study is. Some sort of indication of construction vehicle access requirements. Turning radii and most importantly, number of trucks per day, which is going to be. If you mind ravel, like I've heard you say, it's going to be very substantial. This is part of the planning process for anything I do in Boston, for Massport or anybody else. It needs to be in the report and I, I'm going to recommend the town where we're acquiring. So, so some information about that.
Thank you. Very good point.
Yes, now that the intersection, I wasn't bringing it up earlier because it wasn't really discussed and then it evolved into that. So if they come out of Lake Street. Uh, I'm onto Lake Street and take a right. Rob mentioned numerous intersections. But what you didn't mention is. Now you're going to be talking people that. Go out that way because Prospect Street is packed up. They're going to take a right on Cross Street. We've also got over in Harmony Estates, another road coming out on a cross street. Now we're impacting up on Cross and Center. Which continues on, you know, I mean, it just, this spirals. It just keeps going.
Well, we're going to study, as Rob said, we're going to study that intersection at Cross and Lake Street, so. That's one of the intersections that we'll study. Both uh, existing traffic conditions and traffic patterns and what. Anticipated future travel would be, so um. It's all going to be taken, you know, into a, with regard to the truck. There's no inten- intention right now at this point to. Uh. Extract any gravel from the site. Um, so we don't have any answers in terms of truck traffic in or out uh, with this, but most of the, most of the truck. Movement will be on site as they excavate for the roadway and it'll be. Um, certainly the board have the ability to condition. Um, truck. Deliveries or that kind of thing as we need materials on site, but um, I don't expect uh, that to be an issue.
Any other questions that I'm not going to ask yet this evening?
Just an observation, uh, regulation.
Just one second, sir. Sorry. You had a couple of. Questions. Jim on the back?
Hi, uh, Tom Moreau, five thirteen Lake Street. Uh, I brought up at a previous meeting about, you know, s- serious concerns about that access road going on to Lake Street. We've been there thirteen years. It's a nightmare as it stands, slow road. Especially with your time. Yeah, I think you mentioned earlier, Lou, that you'd submitted a hundred and fifty page traffic study already.
Yes.
Do we, as the public, do we have access to read that?
Yeah, we're going to be posting it on the, the website. It's a big file and I just got the electronic copy, I think, last night, so. Will, it's going to be on the website.
Well, plenty of ones, sorry.
Correct, of your um, proposed projects.
You'll have, that's right.
Yeah.
Fairly short timeframe.
Yeah.
Okay.
Last question of the evening.
Now, you, I was just going to make a comment. Uh, I, I understand the exit into Lake Street going, turning right. Uh, but Lake Street right at the beginning, there's two spots that are very vulnerable due to weather, uh, flood. Uh, we have a bridge that broke, you know, so it's possible that that could be alternate route for people if those were.
Yeah, right. We just talked about that as not being promoted as a cut through. We, we don't want to encourage that, so. We'll be uh, considering those. Measures that will discourage. Um, using that as a cut through.
Yeah, just thinking if there's a flood, you know.
Well, even if flood, then. Hopefully they can definitely take care of it.
So try to put conditions down the road to be careful. So try to put conditions down the road to be careful.
My name is Barry Easterhan from five twenty-one Lake Street. I'm not surprised that you're pursuing. Another avenue since you didn't get the one in Franklin that you proposed originally.
It's nothing to do with it.
What's the effects, and I hope the board takes into consideration the effects that that exit. Is gonna have on all of. The neighbors in that area.
Rob, can you address that?
As far as the traffic affects it, now entering onto Lake Street directly is, that's the question.
That will be the, yes, that's one of the questions, yes.
So, like. I mean, I'm not. Basically, we have to look at the traffic peer review first of all to see what's happening with the traffic generation on that area and. I mean, we're just seeing this today, this is the first public hearing with that access, so. This is pretty preliminary, but I mean, the board's gonna be looking at this from the standpoint of the special permit, to make sure that those criteria is all right.
Do you have an exact location as to where that road comes out onto?
It's marked on the screen as, with the white centerline seal.
So that corner, that corner itself. If that's pretty.
Corn is owing that, you know, we.
Going to Cross Street, yes.
Going to Cross Street, so if you really look at the engineering there, the pavement is not centered in the roadway, so there's a lot of room there to include site distance. We already meet the requirement, as you'll see in the report.
That corner itself, I'm just saying, and the board.
There's one person.
Corner itself has had multiple accidents.
But, well.
So that intersection's not gonna help the situation, they're not location.
The traffic report speaks for itself, they piled all the data, the crash data, whatever, if you, if you're accurate in terms of the number of accidents. It'll show up in the, in the, uh, report. Um, but as far as site distance, for the speed that's on the road, we have adequate site distance looking to the right and to the left. And just so you know, we didn't abandon this. Roadway here because we didn't get permission from Franklin, we don't care what Franklin says. Uh, we, we, we moved this, we moved this road, roadway to benefit the police, uh, firing range, okay? We're trying to work something out so they don't have to move the firing range. We also, um. Uh, think that it's better for our project to not have units. Looking over the recycling center. So it's, it's both combinations, not to mention the fact that the recycling center is dumping on our property. Quite a bit, so. It's not about Franklin, we don't care about Franklin.
Man. Can I answer your question? We're gonna have a peer review like that. It is the person that we hire, they pay for it, that works for us.
Thank you.
Okay? I should have said that earlier. And that's the objective of the period. Nice to be substantial, as you heard. Director, I took it. I wanna thank you all for coming. And we wanna continue this too.
Well, um.
That's when our deadlines are?
Deadline is November four, or fifteen, so we've gotta, we're gonna need to extend that and get a continuation date, which. I guess. Lou, I see you, you want to say something, but.
Yeah, cause I think in terms of going forward before the board closes the hearing.
Continue, it's not closed.
Continue, yes, um. We, we wanna do the peer review of the pump station. And we wanna get a proposal out to the peer reviewer for the traffic. So, to the extent that those. Things can happen in the interim period, you know, we. Continuing to the first meeting in November.
Uh, I, I, just based on what is happening within the industry for peer reviews. We may need some more time, is that correct, Rob?
Yeah, I mean. Yeah, I, I don't know. Um. It's a month, a month away, I mean.
Well, you can always continue from that if you don't have the information, I mean, uh, I have a tendency, I mean, I'm. Working in several towns where the peer reviews are happening much faster than what you're suggesting.
It's up to the board, I mean, I'm comfortable with. If you wanna continue to, we don't have a very stacked agenda right now for the first, well, we only have one meeting in November, which is November fourteenth. Uh, the critical item is. Extending that deadline decision, which, cause we, that would be right after that meeting, so. Um. You know, Lou, if you wanna continue to November fourteenth, I would recommend, uh.
January, February?
I would say January thirty-first, like we did with the other, um, hearing that was continued to December.
Well, I coordinated with Phil's vacations during the winter, I don't know if he's going anywhere.
Work, work around March thirty-first. Just earned the March thirty-first headline by making a crack.
The, the deadlines are.
Just make it a crack.
There you go.
I, I did hear.
I hope the.
Continuance.
The deadlines are, are, give you a little bit comfort level, that's fine.
One thing I, I don't wanna do.
Is it a second?
No.
We're confusing people with the dates we got.
I, I don't want these people to come here on the fourteenth and to continue.
Can we? Can we? The next meeting would then be December twelfth.
Maybe two months, we do two pair of those tomorrow.
It's what the board, I don't, it's what the board wants.
Rob, what do you think? Is, is November fourteenth doable?
November fourteenth, you would. I envision the sewer peer review would be back by then, I don't think the traffic peer review would be back by then.
I think we gotta listen.
We can certainly do the sewer in November.
We could.
Yeah, bringing the public, I mean, the public's been here many, many, many times already, I think it's fair that we vote in December for. The next meeting, which would put the decision deadline into February or so. I mean. That's without any discussion after that, that's, that's easy.
It's the applicant's request, so.
So Phil, you wanna do?
December.
December for both sewer and traffic? You think that would be too much in one meeting? That's my concern.
We're not gonna have, November's gonna be too quick. I mean, I don't know, sometimes November's too quick.
I just feel like the meetings get really long and people get fatigued, that's my only.
Well, maybe if you have it on November and you get one of the peer reviews back in time. Then. You know, then we're good, if not, we can just continue it. If it's not that in time.
I, I hate, my, my family is, these people have come in here a lot. I'm around to have. One long meeting in December. Then have them come back in November and December, that's just my personal opinion.
Yeah. Whatever you decide, I mean, to this point, that's an awful lot of information to cover in one. You know, cause there'll be questions up the wazoo as well.
Yeah, but I mean, do you think we can handle it in one meeting?
That's. I, I mean, for what it's worth. We can talk about the sewer on the fourteenth, it sounds like Rob thinks it'll be done. We can do that, we can discuss that.
And anticipate that it will be done.
Can I just say, what, the sewer is gonna determine a lot of the other issues. That. We wanna consider relative to either. Uh, density or design or other alternatives, so. I would prefer to get that out of the way, get it done. Satisfy these questions of whether or not the town has an adequate pumping station or feasibility of what is necessary to do. And then, um. Move on to the traffic for the next meeting. Just my, my guys' opinion.
Tell me. You have the applicant, you have just one gun.
I think, like, this meeting is, is gone on for quite a bit, um. I think it's easier to have information presented that's, it, you know, it's not any of, it's not the language that many of us speak. Um, every day and to have this information presented. In increments and piecemeal is far better than sp- spending. Three or four hours in a meeting talking about. Issues where. You know, we're all humans, it's late at night, so I don't really see reason to, to bump it out when we don't have to. Cause. I don't know what the.
I, I disagree with you, that's, that's my opinion. I wish, I could bring these people here once, maybe there's two months, but. I'm just one person who wants. Direct a motion.
Hold on, hold on. Letter signed first.
Yeah, so. Your, November is, November fourteenth is the request for the.
That's right, you extend, whatever extension date you need, put it into.
Are you, so, ended January?
Yeah.
He's pointing at me, that was March thirty-first. Yeah, he pointed at me, that's March thirty-first. March thirty-first, he signed it? Yeah, I'm the signer.
I'm not trying to force you to.
I got, you're concerned about my vacation, let's go with that.
Are you going away that week or?
Oh, I'm gonna have to plan a nice vacation for the whole month now.
I think there's another holiday.
March thirty? Or the decision deadline should go to March thirty-first, and then let's work the rest later.
I'm about to write it, so it's March thirty-first.
Well, do, well, Phil, what day is it, is that Sunday or, uh? Maybe we should.
Doesn't matter.
Maybe we should do Saint Patrick Day.
Doesn't matter, no, I like the thirty-first, I am Irish, but the thirty-first.
I wrote down March thirty-first.
And we're gonna continue to my, uh, November fourteenth.
Let's have him sign it and we'll talk about the rest.
I, once it's, once it's written, it's written.
The third first to continue.
I've got the March thirty, I've got the March thirty-first deadline.
Yep.
Are we continuing to November fourteenth or December twelve?
November.
November fourteenth. There you go.
Oh my God. No, you wanna order, you know, where does it?
We, we, we got it on Zoom right now, right?
We're putting an X here.
It's on Zoom.
Um, November fourteen.
November fourteen.
Yeah.
There you go.
You think.
Thank you, Lou. Yep.
Thanks, Lou. Okay, wanna thank you all for coming. But we'll see you on the fourteenth.
Yeah, you gotta.
I'm just saying. Call for the, need a motion?
Yeah.
On fourteen and March thirty-fourth.
Second that, Nick.
Any further discussion? Call for the votes.
Nick, I.
Brian, I.
Bill, I.
Bill, I.
Eli.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
See you soon.
Thank you.
I'll go up and check up on Monday.
For the, uh, yeah, I'll be around, so, well, not Monday.
Oh, Tuesday, yeah.
Thank you all, see your patients one of these weeks, we all appreciate it.
We appreciate your.
If we all have a chance to, um. Do you need comments?
Yeah, I, I have some.
All right, guys, can we hold on?
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is all type of graphical. In the, uh, under the first public hearing, in the motion. There's just a space, it's just, oh, it says two thousand twenty-four space period. Any first. The bolded motion under the first public hearing.
Oh, thank you.
Goodnight, everybody.
Goodnight.
Make it easy, chief.
I'll talk to you soon, buddy.
Sounds good, thank you. Along with that. I have correction, throughout, the dates of, are, include a TH or an ST after the number?
Mm-hmm.
And I don't. I was. We just put the date, October tenth, but it's part of the word. That we're actually in October tenth.
He just want the first in the. Thirteen or something.
It actually. You see it both ways.
Yeah, so I, uh, uh, these are very picky and small things, but just so that we look. Well, yeah. Yes, yeah, just, just so that the record is clean. I would suggest striking the, the STs or the THs after the number.
With that, I move to approve the motions as amended.
And that's.
You'll have a second to. Seventy minutes as a man.
Second. Nick.
Any further discussion? Call for the loop.
Nick, I.
Brian, I.
Bill, I.
Bill.
That much passes and never sleeps. Intertake a motion to adjourn.
So who, second.
Any discussion, call for the loop.
Nick, I.
And I.
Bill, I.
Bill.
Eli.